I'm trapped in a well. Hey, everybody. Welcome. Bonjour, bienvenue. Mon ne... Don't... What am I trying to say here? Um... Je m'appelle Skylar et c'est mon programme, Skylar Learns French. Okay, um, I am streaming to you live right now at nine o'clock at night because I messed up my schedule and I... Oh, hang on, I should do this. Yeah, I messed up my schedule and, um, yeah. So, we're doing this late tonight and, um, would've skipped it if it wasn't a thirty day challenge, which means, uh, you know, I would've broken my thirty day challenge, so I can't do that. Had to do it. Um, if you're not watching, I get it, it's late. It's really late. Um, are, is, are we watching it? Are people watching it? Oh, you know what? Here we go. Messed up, I didn't put it on Facebook and Twitch. Okay, we're good now. We're now sending. We're sending to all the correct places. Okay, set. Is this public? Is this a public stream? Set to public. Okay, well, it is late on a Wednesday night. We had a livestream earlier, it was super fun. Um, we put out a new news article today, um, which was also great, but that took up all my morning editing. Um, so that was not, uh, it was a little unexpected. Um, then we came up with, I, I had some other deadlines that were going on, so... Anyway, bad planning on my part. Shame. For shame. Um, we're here now, it's nine o'clock, I would love to be in bed, um, soon. But, um, we have to learn French and the only way to do that is put the work in. Um, so let's recap real fast what I've done today. I woke up, I listened to an hour of French. Boom, hour, one hour of listening. Um, and then, uh, I read the news in French. So this is from newsinFrench.org? Uh... I have to find this later. Anyway, then I read the news. Then I took, then I, that's it, that's basically all I've done today. Um, so I started out okay. Um, and then everything went to shite. Um, so, we're gonna try to do this now, we're gonna learn some French, I hope you're ready. Um, and please help me out, if you're up and willing and able, uh, tell me what I'm doing wrong. Do you like just seeing my face, uh, inside of a microphone? Okay, I don't care what I look like, it doesn't matter. So, here's what we're gonna do, I'm gonna go through some French, uh, some French flashcards for five minutes. Five minutes of intensive flashcards. Okay, here we go. And we're going French to English, no, we're going English to French. Okay, I just, I kinda spoiled the first one. Um, let's see how many we can get through in five minutes. Put five minutes on the clock, please. Here we go. Bird is un oiseau, we saw that. Oiseau, it's a masculine word, okay. Paintbrush is un pente... Dang it, I... Ahhh! Pinsu. Pinsu. Oh, shoot, do we hear this right now? Wait, hold on, maybe my volume's a little down. Oh nooo, why can't I hear it? Why? It's making noises. One second. Pause on the timer, pause the timer. I gotta check my system preferences. External headphone out. Oh, maybe my headphones are messed up. Check, 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 check. I think I he... I think I, I think I, I think I hear myself. Okay, okay. Oh, I'm muted on the board. Check, check. Ah, this is what happens when you do things late, dude. There we go, okay. Passo, ah, passo. Oh yeah, E A U. E A U is O, right? Passo, passo. Ah, okay, not off to a good start here, guys. Um, it's like soccer, you know, there's like bonus time, so I'm gonna add that in. Okay, um, dinosaur is un dinosaure. That's easy. Pillow, um, is a un oriel. Ori, orie, un or, un orie. Didn't get it right. I was close, though. Lock, um, this is a, uh, sursi, suru. Dang it, man. Um, because I'm very serious about security. I need to feel safe when I'm sleeping. So I need to have a sursi. Okay, keep going. Globe is un globe de terre, un globe terrestre. Really failing here. Boat, un bateau, une bateau? Un bateau. Un bateau. Lamp, uh, la lampe. La lampe, une lampe. Got the gender right, okay. Backpack, uh, I think this is un sac, uh, something. Sacadeau. What is that? Sacadeau. Don't say that S. Why would you say that S? What are you doing? Un sacadeau. Okay. Toothbrush, um, un broude dent, un brosse dent. Like really bad, just generalizations happening in my brain right now. Um, you're close, uh, not, not quite, not quite there. Une brosse dent, okay. Une, it is feminine. Heart, un cœur, coeur. Un cœur, un cœur, un cœur, it's... It's kinda like encore, right? It's like... "I always want your heart again." Aw, that's so sweet. Encore, okay. Um, ruler, I have no idea. Okay, start. All right, we got one more minute to stay on track here, I've made it through twelve words. Uh, okay. Pencil is un crayon. Crayon, okay. Computer is un ordinateur. Yes, masculine. Oops. I just wanted to hear it. Ordinateur, okay. Bulldozer, I have no clue. And bulldozer, that's probably why. Skipped it, I was like, that one's easy. Stapler. No idea. Un graphiste. Un graphiste. Okay, we're coming back to it. Drawing, ah... I feel like I know this one. Indessin, indessin, indessin. Ah, man, dessin. Okay, well, that was the worst ever. We had seventeen words in ten minutes. It's not really ten minutes, I did like four minutes. Um, but we're trying to get through a lot and I'm tired and obviously, this isn't working. So, um, let me just, uh, jump back to me. Cool, all right, yeah, we got some people on Facebook, we got some people on, um, YouTube. Nobody on Twitch, I wonder why? Um, yeah, I'm, I can take him. Uh, sure. We're trying to... We're trying to figure out who's gonna take the dog out. Um, and everything's messed up, the whole schedule's messed up now. Uh, Marshall says, "I only got about three right also." Well, that makes me feel good. We both suck at French together. Um, actually, I know Marshall, Marshall is, is doing great things in French. And, um, I would venture to say is it, is... Is more versed. Higher level. Okay, um, let's do a thing. Let's do some babble. This is gonna be really embarrassing, so if you don't, if you haven't been watching, we just started trying to do some babble. Um, and thi- this just makes me look so dumb. I mean, I am dumb, don't, don't get me wrong. But this really, is really, 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 uh... Combien ça coûte? Combien ça coûte? Combien ça coûte? Oh my lord. Combien ça coûte? Okay, cool, didn't get it. Je, je demande l'addition. Je mon, je dem... Je demande l'addition. Je demande l'addition. Yeah, got, got it. Ça coûte seize euros quinze. I'm like saying it too good for this thing. Ça coûte seize euros quinze. Quinze, right? Ça coûte seize euros... It just says no. Treize ou quatorze euros en tout? Treize ou quatorze euros en tout? En tout. Oh, I took it, okay, cool. This is kinda like when you wrinkle up that, the bill and you gotta put it into the machine and it like spits it back out at you, that's what this is. All right. Ça coûte seize, uh, seize euros... Ça coûte seize euros? Quinze? That costs, um, fifteen euros. Sixteen, seize euros. Quinze? Oh, six, oh, six fifteen, I got you. Je demande l'addition, can I get the bill, please? Treize ou quatorze euros en tout? Combien ça coûte? I just said all of those. Combien ça co... Oh, I wasn't paying attention to how much, ah, how to spell these. Done. Uh, l'addition. Cool. Great, I demand it, je demande. Ça coûte, uh, seize... Ou, seize euros quinze. Are you gonna let me go to the next one? Seize, quinze. Oh, how do we, how do you spell quinze? No, quinz, there you go. Okay, thirteen or fourteen euros in total. Uh, treize, treize, ou, done. Ou quatre, cat... Nope. Quet... Tzoz, is that it? Woo, killing it. Uh, je demande l'addition. I don't know if I like this or not. I spelled that wrong, oops. Uh, alors combien ça coûte? Oh, we're just putting these, we're just doing these all over again, okay. Treize... Ou... Fourteen? Quat... Tzoz. Treize ou quatorze euros, non? Treize ou quatorze, non? Ça coûte, uh, s... seize? Ça coûte seize euros... Uh, s... Senke... Right? Nope. What just happened? What did I let me do? Can't... Uh, wait, what's happening in my brain? Uh, kinda like autocorrected for me. Okay. Desse-t. And how much, oh man, we're, this is gonna take forever. Desse-t. All right, I'm skipping this, we're just not doing this right now. Take it, desse-t. 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 Oh my god. Desse-t. Desse-t. What the heck? Nineteen. I'm gonna try to trigger it, okay. All right. Vain. Vain. Oh, I even said it kinda wrong the first time, what? Match the items. Dix-huit. Dix-neuf. Cool. Dix-neuf. Cool. Trois euros vingt, 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 I always make it vingt, but it's vingt. En tout, ça coûte dix-huit euros quinze. En tout, ça coûte dix, uh, dix-huit, is that what you said? Dix-huit, dix-huit. Great, let's do this. Seize ou dix-sept euros? Seize ou, oh, dix-sept, sorry. Sorry, sorry, dix-sept. Review numbers. Uh... Quinze. Treize. Treize. Dix-sept, nope, dix-six. Nope. What am I messing up here? Dis... Dis... All right, des... No, I'm sorry, what am I doing? Seize. Uh, quatre... Cool. Dix-be, dix-neuf, dix-neuf. Dix-neuf. Okay, taking too much time here, vingt. Gotta move faster, 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 we're on a speed run. Dix-huit. Nope, that's wrong. Come on, let's do this thing. Um, okay, last step, last step, we'll get out of here. Tu demande l'addition, s'il te plaît? Uh, la, elle coûte, I'm skipping the accent. Yay, thirty of thirty-eight, okay. Well, that wasn't super bad. It wasn't great. Close. Um, okay, I want to go to le risot et le ballon. No, you know what? Let's do some listening together. Who's on right now? Do we have people watching? Nah, I got like two people watching. Well, appreciate you guys watching, hope you're having fun. Um, this is what I was, this is what I've been listening to, these are super great, I am in love with these. Um, this is a person, her name is, uh, Alice, Alice Alay. And she does like two-minute videos, this started in like two thousand seventeen, I think, so these are all, she's got tons and tons and tons of stuff, yeah. And relatively not that many views for being out there for that long. This is incredible. Um, so Teaching the Natural Way, this is like she tells a story and then draws it out and kind of like animates with it and does a bunch of stuff, so... We're, I think we should just listen to, I just wanna do like an episode. I've already listened to a lot of these, I'm, I'm continuing to, but I'm gonna like really listen to an episode each time we get on here. So, let's listen to Marc et la cuisine italienne. Okay. Il y a un homme.
Un homme.
Un homme.
Il y a un homme. Il s'appelle Marc.
S'appelle Marc.
Marc adore la cuisine italienne.
Marc adore la cuisine. Adore le pizza.
Il adore manger.
Il adore manger. Manger.
Il adore manger les pizzas.
La cuisine italienne.
Il adore manger les pizzas, les spaghettis, les lasagnes. Il adore la cuisine italienne. Marc mange la cuisine italienne tous les jours. Il mange de la cuisine italienne tous les midis.
Tous les midis.
À midi pour le déjeuner.
À midi pour le déjeuner.
Il mange de la cuisine italienne à tous les dîners à dix-neuf heures.
À tous les dîners à dix-neuf, dix-neuf heures.
Pour le dîner, il mange aussi de la cuisine italienne. Il mange de la cuisine italienne tous les jours. Tous les jours. Tous les midis et à tous les dîners à dix-neuf heures. Marc mange trop de cuisine italienne.
Mange trop.
Il n'aime plus la cuisine italienne.
N'aime plus, oh no.
Il n'aime plus les spaghettis, il n'aime plus les pizzas, il n'aime plus les lasagnes.
N'aime plus, what is in them? Wait, hold on, il n'aime, il n'aime plus. So, not, wait, n'aime, like m, right? So, he does not like Italian food. Il n'aime plus, does not like at all. Or much, okay? Il n'aime plus, so does not like. This is interesting. Definitely something to be listening for.
Il aime la cuisine mexicaine. Voilà, c'est fini. Et toi, qu'est-ce que tu aimes manger?
Qu'est-ce que tu aimes manger?
Quelle cuisine est-ce que tu aimes?
Quelle cuisine, which cuisine?
Moi, j'aime la cuisine française bien sûr. Mets dans les commentaires ce que tu aimes manger.
Mets dans la commentaire. Um, super cool, super cool. Oh, no longer, Charlotte says, "Il n'aime plus," means no more, no longer. Philip says, "No more." Um, great, thanks for the help, yeah. Um, so, no, no longer likes? Il n'aime plus? Or is it just ne plus? Okay, ne plus means no more. Definitely need to, uh, hear that more in context, but love it, good stuff. I think this is so cool, to be honest, I think, um, I love this style of learning. You just like see it over and over and hear it and kinda like how, and storytelling. Screw these stupid flashcards. Okay, let's go to l'oiseau et le ballon. Balline, balline, okay. I'm probably, we're about halfway through. Charlotte says, "He no longer likes or doesn't like anymore." Il n'aime plus, il n'aime plus, il n'aime plus l'italien, la cuisine italienne. Il n'aime plus le spaghetti. I don't know if it's le spaghetti or las, it's le... Okay. So, last time in our story here, we, uh, found out, oh yes, we found out that the bird, the l- the oiseau could, could dive, but he couldn't hold his breath long enough to stay underwater. So, um, here's the bird diving, um, and the whale was teaching it how to do that. Um, let's see. Says, mais, oh wait. D'accord. Uh, we went too far. I think we went too, uh, why, 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 why? Okay, sorry, 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 sorry. Um, okay, so this is basically what we found, and then, yeah, he'd fall and he's swimming, okay, na, 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 but, here he goes. But, uh... Il ne peut plus, il ne peut plus respirer. Il retuna à la surface, surface, à bout de souffle. Il essaya, essaya, essaya. Encore et encore de nager, mais il manquait de souffle à chaque fois. Um, prrr, I wanna listen to that, probably butchering that, that's okay. So basically, he's saying, um... But he, he tries to dive and dive and dive and he always has to return to the surface 'cause he's out of air. So this is where we're picking up, let's see if we can find this.
Je nage, dit-il. Je suis une baleine. Mais bientôt, il ne put plus respirer. Il returna à la surface à bout de souffle. Il essaya encore et encore de nager, mais il manquait de souffle à chaque fois. Je ne pense pas qu'un oiseau puisse être une baleine, dit l'oiseau. Viens plutôt avec moi, je vis sur les falaises. C'est un endroit merveilleux, le temps y est chaud et agréable, et tous les matins, tu peux regarder le soleil se lever.
Okay, cool, 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 cool. Je ne pense pas quelqu'un, oiseau, puisse être, puisse être un ballon. Okay, um, I never thought um, a, a bird could be a whale. Dit l'oiseau, dit wa, dit l'oiseau. Uh, vienne, uh, viens plutôt avec moi. Plutôt is, um... Uh, prrr, dang it. Come... Come up with me, I don't know. Je vis, uh, sur le facile. I see on le, something. C'est un endroit merveilleux. Something, oh, we learned what endroit meant last time and I don't remember it. Uh, merveilleux. I don't know what that is. Le temps est, uh, le temps y est chaud et agréable. Uh, the temperature, the, the weather is hot and nice. Et tous les matins, tu peux regarder le soleil se lever. Uh, and... And in the mornings, or every morning, you can watch the sun as you wake. How'd we do? I don't think a bird can be a whale. Je ne pense pas qu'un oiseau puisse, puisse, puisse être un ballon, baleine, oh. Says the bird. Come with me instead, plutô is instead in this case, okay. Viens plutôt avec moi. Come with me instead. Uh, je vis, I live... Uh, on the cliffs. Sur les fa- falassies, falassies. Say, uh, the weather is warm and pleasant. C'est un endroit merveilleux, merveilleux. Okay? And you can watch the sunrise every morning. Et tous les matins, tu peux regarder le soleil se lever. So, so, the sun, it rises. As it rises, okay, let's listen. J'aime pas. So not je ne pen. Je ne pa- je ne pen pas. Is that what I hear? What's going on? Oh my gosh. J'aime pas, je pen- I didn't even hear pen, pens. Jeun? Definitely hear that. It's not... Je ne pense pas. It's just, je ne pen pas. Uh, okay? I heard that then. Je ne pense pas qu'un, je pa- je pense pas qu'un. Je pa- passe, pas qu'un. Je pa- pense, je pense pas qu'un. Okay. Falaise. Je vis sur le falaise. Falaise, the cliffs. Je vis sur les fas- falaises. C'est un, c'est un endroit merveilleux. C'est un endroit merveilleux. Soleil se lever. Se lever, soleil se lever. Okay. Let's see what he says. He says, "Je me regarde le se- se lever." "I love watching the sunrise," says the whale. "Et j'aime, et je t'aime aussi." And "I love you too." This is such a sweet story. Je te suivrai n'importe où. "I will follow you wherever." Mais d'abord apprends-moi. Uh, okay, I remember this. So this is a callback. We've already heard this. Mais d'abord apprends-moi à être un oiseau. So, first, "But first, teach me how to be a whale." "I love to watch the sunrise," says the whale, "and I love you too." "I will follow you anywhere, but first, teach me to be a bird." Okay, and so now we're gonna turn, we're gonna figure that out. Okay, cool. Well, this has been thirty minutes and it's late. Um, I'm gonna pick it up again tomorrow, kinda early, hopefully. So, um, yeah, I'm pretty much done. My brain is hurting and it's late. Why are y'all even watching this right now? Um... I got a cool Sweetgreen shirt on. What? Alright. Hope you guys had fun. I will talk to you later. A bientôt. Au revoir. Uh, ciao. Arrivez d'ici. Tschus. Gutten tag. Wie geht's Ihnen? I was trying to think of the Spanish one, which is the obvious one and I can't. Okay. Sayonara.